Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, Meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig? Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Rahhauser?
Here.
Eight members are present.
Thank you. First, we have our report from our Student Board Representatives. I see we have Sarah with us tonight.
For the elementary report, kindergarten registration and screening is occurring in all four elementary buildings. All elementary buildings celebrated Fun/Field Day on Friday, May 17th. A special thank you to our PTO volunteers and the high school students for spending the day with our students. All buildings are preparing for end-of-year celebrations and award programs for staff and students. For the secondary report, eighth-grade students traveled to Washington, DC on May 6th. The eighth-grade social studies and science teachers designed a morning of Oregon Trail activities for students. Students received snow cones as a reward for putting forth tremendous effort on the PSSA and Keystone Assessments. The talent show was held on Friday, May 17th. The eighth-grade academics' award celebrations will be held on Wednesday, May 22nd. Last week, Dover Area High School held its senior scholastic awards program. Members of the graduating class were awarded with over $130,000 in scholarships that evening. Thank you to our community partners for supporting our students. This Friday, the high school will hold its annual senior walk. Graduating students will be visiting all elementary schools and the intermediate school to begin their graduation activities. The high school will also host its commencement ceremony for the class of 2019 on Saturday, June 8th at 9:00 a.m. The ceremony is scheduled to be held in the stadium at the high school. For our fine arts, the music programs provided their spring concerts over the past month. Thank you to the community for supporting our arts programs this year. And for athletics, the varsity baseball team qualified for district for the first time in 10 years. They played a tight game but fell to Gettysburg High School yesterday, 1 to 0. The spring sports awards night was held last night also. During this event, a number of students received athletic and scholar-athlete awards. Congratulations to all our spring athletes on a successful season.
Any questions for Sarah? Okay, before we let you go, Sarah, we'd like to thank you, the board, on behalf of all of your service as our Student Board Representative. We hate to see you leave. We look forward to your reports every month, but this is your last meeting. So we have a special little recognition for you here tonight. We understand you're headed off to Slippery Rock, so we might have something that will help you there.
Can you get Brad for picture?
I got it.
I see him coming.
Sorry.
First, we have the official certificate for all of your service. Thank you very much.
We'd like you to open it, yes. We get very excited about this.
Gigi is not with us tonight, but we do have a similar gift for Gigi as well, so hopefully we will catch her before she graduates and runs out of town as she heads on to her next phase.
Where is she going?
She's staying here. She'll be back, though, so, before she escapes for the summer. We do have our retiree recognition tonight as well, so I'll turn that over to Mrs. Kroom to announce those.
Okay, so we would like Margaret Gofor and Darlene Sequel to come forward.
Okay, and next we have our Dover Eagle Foundation grant presentations. We're giving out some money tonight, I believe. That would be you. We have Amanda Stanninger and Gwen Murphy joining us tonight from the foundation.
All right, on behalf of Dover Eagle Foundation...
If you could talk to the microphone, that would be awesome.
On behalf of the Dover Eagle Foundation, we would like to recognize two of the three teachers who were able to be here this evening. Thank you. We just want to give you money. At the beginning of the year, the Dover Eagle Foundation was trying to get re-up and running, and it's been a slow process. We're getting our, we have our board together, we're getting community members. Each meeting, we seem to have one or two more people who are getting involved, and we finally have gotten that established. So now we are ready to actually award some of the grants that were requested at the beginning of the year. So we want to thank all of the teachers for their patience. We have two of the three teachers with us this evening who are going to be receiving the grants that they have requested. I'd like to call Rebecca Haldeman up first to receive hers, and she can say a few words about... Congratulations. Oh, picture first. I'm learning, everything is protocol.
I'd like to thank the Dover Eagle Foundation for the gift of breakout boxes for my classroom. I have previously used breakout boxes from materials that I've kind of pieced together with help from PTO, but they weren't the actual breakout boxes. So now that I have a chance to use the real ones, it'll make it a lot easier for myself and my students to complete them. For those of you that might not know, breakout boxes are like mini escape rooms where they have to solve puzzles that deal with curricular-based items, but also use teamwork, cooperation, and communication to complete them. So they're a really great way for the students to apply what they've learned and work together. So, thank you, Dover Eagles.
We also approved a $170 grant for Austin Deardorff for a STEM project in her classroom that she's going to be using year-long for different activities. It wasn't one thing specific, but it was something she uses to integrate STEM into the classroom. She was not, or students were not able to receive that, but she will be getting her money. And then finally, we have the world-famous group. Each year, they keep upping the bar. Mr. Nolan and the submarine project. Gentlemen, if you would like to share a few words, no first picture.
As Mrs. Murphy said, we up the bar every year. Last year, Yakub and I participated in the Mars Rover competition, and we took first place out of colleges and high schools. This year, we're hoping to do a repeat, but this time, we're building a submarine. It's for the international submarine races. It's a biannual competition in which colleges, high schools around the world compete to build a free flooding submarine. This submarine has to travel in a water basin in Bethesda, Maryland. This water basin is 30 feet deep and a mile long, so it's quite some pedaling for Yakub to do. He is our pilot for this year. We'd like to thank the Dover Eagle Foundation as well. At the beginning of the year, we're wondering how we're going to raise all the funds for registration, material costs, and our team members have been going around to local businesses and participating in fundraisers to get sponsorships, and the Dover Eagle Foundation tops off our budget for the year, so thank you very much.
Our pleasure. Thank you much, very much, for the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy and Mrs. Stanniger. This is exciting to see these things happening from the foundation now.
One question.
Yes.
How much money did you give out?
We gave out $2,000 and 2,500, 2,300?
$2,000 for the robotics.
$2,000 robotics, $150 for the breakout.
$2,320.
$2,000, okay.
$2,320 tonight. And I did that without my calculator on here. I'm proud of myself. Okay, next is our first public comment period. This is for items on or off of the agenda. It is a three-minute period, so if you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Next up is Board President's Communication. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting so that our solicitor could bring us up to date on some legal matters and to discuss some personnel issues as well. Next is the appointment of Jennifer Lepo as Assistant Board Secretary, effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Benko, I know you're catching up with the vote contraption here. The motion carries. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Steve Cook as School Board Treasurer for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Point of order, Mr. Pratt, do I participate in this vote?
You can.
I can.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you're voting yes, but...
And the vote carries. Congratulations, Mr. Cook. We don't have to change the signatures on the checks anymore. Okay, next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 16th, 2019 Board Meeting.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing done, Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2019 Board Planning Meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing done, Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda now. We do have a lot of items on this agenda tonight, so as usual, we'll go down through them for any questions. But first, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, there are a lot of items here. Are there any questions on any of the items listed from 702 down through 734?
It's my understanding many of the contracts that are in there are just basically renewable contracts that we renew at this time of the year, every year. So many of those that are on there related to special needs contracts and that sort of thing.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing done, Mrs. Benko?
Question, do we have the full consent? Was that what came up there? I thought it was only just the one item.
Yeah, it's 7.34.
Is it one? It's motion to approve all under, all items under consent.
Okay, all right. I thought mine came up differently.
And the motion carries. And I do believe we have our new varsity cheerleading coach here with us tonight, Marissa James. Would you like to stand up and be recognized by everybody? Welcome to the district. We're excited to have you. Okay. Moving on to our next category, which is the Human and Fiscal Resources category. We do have our final budget presentation this evening, so I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Benko and Mrs. Kroom.
Okay, so as we've done in the months prior to, leading up to May, we will go through the, what is in the final budget for your approval tonight. I'm not going to go into great detail on each item as we have been reviewing it for the past couple of months. So if I go too fast, please slow me down and ask questions as needed. Okay, so this is the, where we were at the April preliminary budget overview. We were sitting at a budget deficit of approximately $2.1 million. Over the past month, we have refined some of our numbers, made some changes, and I'll go into the summary of those changes here in a minute. But currently, our final budget overview, we are budgeting revenue of $63,778,655 and expenditures of $65,307,158, leaving us with a budget deficit for the 1920 school year of $1,528,503. So a couple of things have changed since we met in April. First, I'd like to visit revenues. The revenues went from $63.46 million to $63.77 million. The modifications reflect a change in estimates for interest revenue. We are seeing some good increases in our interest revenue right now in our flex investments, and it's really helping to drive up our numbers. So we added an additional $100,000 based on our estimates for the fourth quarter of this year. Also modified was our estimates for basic education funding. The state had put out a proposed allocation for our basic education subsidy, and those numbers are looking good. I am still being conservative, however, we are budgeting right now for our current allocation for the 1718 year plus $100,000. As, you know, we all know, the state budget is not passed yet, and it's always up in the air to what we're, you know, what we're going to get, but I'm comfortable putting that extra $100,000 there in the revenue piece. The revenues were also modified to reflect our state grant award. Thank you to Mr. Perkins for getting the PCCD safety grant for us, and that was $113,000, which actually is an offset in expenditures, as you'll see below. For expenditures, there were a few changes on that side also. We went from $65.59 million to $65.3 million. The modifications there were, as a effect of our current enrollment study, we look at, on an ongoing basis, we look at our enrollment versus our staffing and go from there, so that was a $195,000 change. We also modified to take the HP Sand storage project out of the general fund budget, and we will be completing that as a D-10 project, as you had approved in the consent agenda. So that will go over to the Capital Projects Fund, and as you are aware, there are two different funds, and the general fund budget is mainly our, you know, our daily basis, our daily expenditures and revenues in and out. We have a Capital Projects Fund that we've been funding the bigger projects out of, also a capital reserve fund for our construction project and such. So this presentation here today is just for our general fund side of the budget. Also, as I mentioned earlier, we modified the budget to reflect our PCCD safety grant, so that took off $113,000, or that added $113,000 in expenditures, and we just made some other miscellaneous adjustments based on our projections and estimates. So history of our financial operations, I'm not going to go through the entire history. Last month, when we presented the budget, our 2019 deficit was looking at, it would be about $1.4 million, or $1.6 million. After we reviewed our interest revenue, we were able to modify that, and we're looking at about $1.4 million for our deficit for 2018-19. However, please remember that that includes a transfer out from our general fund budget over to our capital funds, Capital Project Fund, to help offset some of the costs of things like the D-10 projects that we had discussed, and also our capital project at the high school. So I think we've reviewed our budgeting goals and objectives over the past couple of months. I'm not going to go through all of those. Real quick, some of the staffing adjustments. We're moving the ISD into the assistant, to an assistant principal position. We are adding in four ILTs per elementary, K-6 English, Math, and Math Department chairs. One teacher will move from Dover Elementary to a district elementary-wide math coach at no additional cost impact. And also, we will be moving a high school PE teacher and share that position with the intermediate school. New in the budget, as we talked about a little bit earlier, as a result of our current enrollment study, over the past few months, we are made aware of two staff resignations and retirements, and as a result, we revisited the overall enrollment at each building with equity across the district. And Mrs. Kroom is going to talk a little bit about how that has an effect on enrollment and class size and things like that. So if you would...
So one of the things we do with every single position, if someone retires or resigns, is we review the position and make sure that it is still a position that is necessary in the district. So we've been looking at enrollment at the elementary schools probably since November, and the principals have done an amazing job keeping this up to date so we could watch our trends. So if you take a look at live second grade and Dover third grade, live second grade, yes, and Dover third grade, those two positions, one was a retirement, one was a resignation, and we are recommending that we not retirement, we do not replace that next year due to the nature that we do not think we need three teachers in third grade or four teachers in third grade, and we don't think we need four teachers in second grade. The other areas, first grade Dover, first grade live, kindergarten Weigles Town, and third grade Weigles Town, again, with class enrollment, class size, and our board policy, we don't think we need to continue having four teachers in each of those grades either. At that, at this time, what that gives us is a little room should kindergarten come in higher than we expect. I want to remind everyone that last year, while Weigles Town looks very nice at 69 going into first grade, next year, last year, in, at the end of July, that was at 81. And that is why, if you see kindergarten right now at Weigles Town with four teachers, that's because they had 81 students to start the year, and that's why we put four teachers there. We are not recommending any furloughs at all. However, we, with Weigles Town and live especially, and the growth there, we want to be fluid and make sure, should we have a kindergarten come in at 80 students, that we can support that. Remind you, two years ago, Dover did the same in the summer, and we had to put a paraprofessional in each kindergarten class. One of the concerns with those classes, too, is the equity among the buildings. So if you take a look at where there are four teachers, we feel that we need to be equitable. So if you take a look at first grade live with four teachers next year, and then you, at 65 students, but, I'm sorry, at Dover, and you go over to live in second grade, 67 students, we would have to keep four at both of those grade levels. Again, we are concerned about kindergarten, so we do not want to add additional teachers to the budget, so we think we can, we can kind of contain our staffing in this, these numbers. Are there any questions about that?
Okay.
What, if we started at 80, last year went down to 69, what kind of things affect the change in enrollments versus, you know, when they first sign up versus now, looking at it a year later?
Well, this group did not sign up until July, so they didn't sign up during kindergarten registration in May. It's a transient population, and as quickly as students came, students left. So it is a very, that is a very transient population in a lot of live and Weigles Town. So, no reasons, they just, they just move.
Come and go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions on the enrollment study? Other budget components, guidance, guidance secretary is going from 10 months to 12 months. We're increasing some professional guidance summer hours based on the need to really look at our procedures and policies in place. Social, emotional services. We are looking to hire an additional social worker to provide additional supports to our students, and we will go through some of that, the importance of the social worker here in a minute. Also, safety and security. We are, in the budget is a full-time school resource officer and also leading control station. So I'm going to have Mrs. Kroom, that is going to talk about the importance of the additional SRO and social worker.
So we added additional data for you to review for the, those two additional positions. And just, you know, a couple reminders that in the fall, we do a community budget survey, and the number-one request of the community, which is primarily our parents, was our priority is to be safety. And Eva and social-emotional needs as four. So first and four out of 14, those were the priorities from our parents. Again, a reminder that the Pennsylvania Youth Survey data, which we give that survey every two years, I think, really showed an overwhelming need for additional security and social-emotional supports for students at all level, levels. I'll tell you, especially our intermediate school students, they definitely have a higher sense of... a higher sense of concern for their safety and well-being, and while our school resource officer is wonderful, he is very busy at the high school, and the goal is to have the second, second school resource officer to be at the ISN, at the elementaries, and I can tell you, he's very handy at the elementaries as well, and he is called quite a huffin' by our principals. The school social worker, our needs, as we shared with the PACE survey, that our results for mental health issues in Dover is higher than the state average. And we have another little bit of data I'm going to show you in a minute. Again, it's just Kirsten's done an amazing job putting a number of social and emotional things in place, and quite frankly, she cannot, she can't handle all of the things she put in place. She is pulled throughout the day, she implements district-wide prevention, she meets with students, she meets with staff, she does early intervention, she might be called in on a suicide prevention, she might be called anywhere. She is going all day, every direction through this entire district, and it's just really, we cannot keep up the programs that she has put in place with just her in place. The other thing is, I want to remind you that last year, she brought to the district, along with our weekend lunch program, but she also brought to the district a program where students could get school-based therapy and at-home therapy, but school-based therapy, not a cost to the district, and she was able to put a counselor in every single solitary elementary school, or secondary school, and our high school without a penny to the district. And through that, she referred a hundred and thirty-five students to that therapy to get therapy that day. Now, safe-to-say intervention. So, as you, if you remember, PDE came out with a safe-to-say program in January, and it's a program where students can, or parents can give a call and give anonymous tips, and we are very pleased at the way we rolled it out. We think we did a very good, great job. It is at the, at both the intermediate school and the high school, the assistant principals are the ones who receive this, as well as Brad Perkins and Kirsten. So, how that basically works is when a student is worried for their child, and they, they put a tip in, this goes right to the police department, they decide whether or not this is real or not, it comes immediately down to the assistant principal of the building, Kirsten, and Brad, every single time. I get it as well, as I like to keep an eye on what we're seeing, and this is our data from February through May twenty-third, just two and a half months. So, we had twenty-three tips, seven suicide ideation, two depression anxiety, nine physical-verbal act or threat against another, four self-harm, one weapon. Only one at the, one at the elementary school, which was interesting because they're not included yet, eleven at the IS, eleven at the high school. So, when it involves, I'm going to tell you all of them, what is my data there, only six out of the twenty-three were during the school day. The rest of them were on weekends, evenings, Easter Sunday, they come in, and we have to deal with them right away. And once we are involved with them, Officer Allen may go out to the family, Kirsten may go out to the family, and assistant principals, they are on, and they are literally talking to each other and to the police, whoever needs to, depending on what it is. So, if it's suicide, someone is sent out immediately. If it's a physical-verbal act that might happen in school the next day, the police are notified, and Officer Allen gets involved. But I can tell you, of the twenty-three up there, all of those people were notified, and more often than not, almost all of them had to respond. And all of them, every one was founded. So, while nothing did end in a suicide, we absolutely intervened with seven children who were absolutely having suicidal ideations. And so, again, those respondents are Mark, Allen, Kirsten Johnson, the building assistant principals, and Brad Perkins, they are on every single call. So, again, going back to our, why we feel we need the school social worker and the school resource officer, our, our data is really basically saying that our students need these supports and their families. Any questions about that data?
Okay. So, we continue on. As we discussed last month, we will be in the budget process, we are adding an autistic support class to the intermediate school. This is not a new class, but students moving up to the intermediate school from the elementary. So, we're not taking something back from the IU, we are just continuing our program here at the district. In technology, without an increase to the prior year budget, we will replace some MacBooks and some full-size iPads for teachers and students, we will upgrade microphones and such, and we will be adding a full-time secretarial support for inventory purchasing, iPad handouts, things like that. Curriculum-related services, we have added an ESL additional support from the IU, and we will keep our eye out on, on some of our staffing models to see if we can handle some of that through our current staff here at the district going forward. Science materials and resources, we're looking at adding some custodial support for our buildings, and just other community outreach and mission and visions statement and branding. The salaries and benefits, they follow the contracts, along with, you know, PISers follows the certified rates from PISers each year. Outside cyber charter tuition, again, that was an increase from the March to April preliminary budget. We are continuing to keep our eye on our statistics and our data here for our outside cyber charter students, and we will be working to bring some of those students hopefully back to our district in our buildings or into our cyber program. We're forming an administrative committee to study our processes and procedures for students attending outside cybers. We're going to look at for those students to have to come in and provide verification of their address every year, just so we can stay on top of, and make sure that those students are our, our district's students.
And just again, just to remind you of these costs, you know, we went last year with only eight, well, not only, eighty-two regular ed students. This past year, we're up to a hundred regular ed students, and that is at thirteen and a half, that was, I think, or was that thirteen or eleven, eleven point five a year per child? And then if you look at special ed, we have gone from twenty-five to twenty-nine at twenty-four thousand dollars per student. So, that is something we have to take a very, very close look at.
Okay, so we circle back to our, hold on one second, I'm sorry. Our budget summary for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, our revenues are at sixty-three million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Our expenditure budget is at sixty-five million, three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, leaving our deficit at one million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and three dollars. As we move into the next fiscal year, as always, my team and I and other district administrators remain fiscally responsible. We look at every single dollar that comes in and goes out, and we'll do our best to try to minimize that deficit as we go through the year. You have any other questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Benko and Mrs. Kroom. Since we have seen the budget presentation at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the Dover Area School District establishing the tax rates and approving the budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen.
Is it moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Can I ask who, who seconded the motion?
Charlie.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the enclosed bond parameters resolution for the refunding of the two thousand and fifteen A and two thousand and fifteen B bonds.
Do you move?
Second.
Hold on one second, please. The motion was marked consent.
We're just going to do a voice vote, and she can enter this later. Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on now to the Dover Eagle Foundation. As you saw, we had some excitement tonight as we distributed some of the first funds from the foundation for some very deserving projects. The foundation had their meeting earlier this month at which they finalized their bylaws, and they also have worked on a lot of new fundraising ideas so that we can keep the money going out, which is exciting. So, they have a lot going on right now, and I'm very excited to see the activity in the foundation at this point. So, any questions about the foundation? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to York Adams Academy. Mr. Emig is not with us this evening. Mrs. Kroom, did you have anything on that?
No, that just graduation is in May, June date, fourth, June fourth. So, and if you've never been to their graduation, it is, it's quite an event. It is, we're really proud of our kids who do a lot of good work there.
Do we know where that's occurring? Is it at the old Central High School building? Okay, time?
Probably seven.
Seven, okay. Okay, thank you. York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
The only thing I have is, as I reported last meeting, that originally the, yeah, proposals for the new gym were due last month. Several of the prospective contractors have, had asked for an extension so that they could get some more accurate numbers for them. So, they did extend that, I believe it was till the middle of the month, and I think it just closed a couple of weeks ago, apparently because a reporter called me asking for comments. But we haven't heard anything official on that yet. So, my guess is that we will find out at our June meeting what they look like, and I'll report back once I find out.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, LIU, Mr. DeSho, Mrs. Kroom, Mrs. Benko.
Tomorrow, Mrs. Guyer and I will be heading to the IU for our second Special Education Task Force meeting. It's been, it's been a very eye-opening group to be a part of. The special ed department shares their costs and talks to us about their costs, and we have lots of questions for them. So, we will keep you posted and see how we make out tomorrow. It's been, it's been good, though. We've been learning a lot about, they explain how they budget and how they do, how they, why they charge us, how they charge us, and we have given our suggestions, and they are making some changes. So, we think that's a good thing, but we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Kroom? Okay, Legislative and York Learning Center with Mr. Rahhauser.
Last week, I attended Representative Grove's town meeting. He discussed about how the state has had a good year as far as income, and they'll have surpluses, but he said they're going to be cautious because they don't know how next year is going to be, so they figured putting some in the rainy day fund. He also said it'd probably be another hundred and sixty million dollars on top of the five hundred million going out for education, and he also said that the tax collectors in York County are all being audited because some of them have a lot of money on hand at times, and they want to check their books. And I asked him about if they got the law changed yet, that the clubs, booster clubs get audited when the school gets audited, and he said they haven't changed that yet, but he said it wouldn't hurt to sometime maybe for the school just to have an audit done of all the booster clubs to see if they're following all their procedures, because he said it couldn't hurt nothing. And I think that's about it on legislation. And as far as Learning Center, will probably be meeting next week. I have nothing to report since the last meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Rahhauser? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brenton, PSBA.
One of the initiatives that's a hot topic in Harrisburg regarding education is workforce development. There was a package of bills that was passed out of the House. There's an interesting, for those of you who get, who've checked the PSBA mailers, the emails, there's an episode of the video edition where Representative Mike Tobash and the PSBA Chief Advocacy Officer John Callahan discuss Representative Tobash's five, House Bill five twenty-two, which would provide tax credits to businesses that contribute to career and technical education programs that, in participating public schools and CTE schools, which is very interesting if you're interested in the workforce development. I highly recommend checking that out. Additionally, PSBA is advocating against, I guess it's advocating, not technically advocating then, actually opposing a group or a package of bills that would deal with cyber charter and charter schools. One of those bills, they managed to get enough opposition against that it stalled the whole package, so they're asking to continue to, to voice opposition for those bills to keep them from moving through the legislature.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Brenton? Okay, Mrs. Herman, the Dover Industrial Development Authority.
Okay, this morning, the Business Association had another meeting, breakfast meeting. They've been eating, eating, they do that too at the meeting, but they've been meeting about once every three months, three to four months, and it's getting off the ground very nicely. We have another meeting tomorrow night, and there are some buzzes going on. The zoning officer can't say a lot yet as to more industry or commercial development in the township, so I'm excited about that. So, maybe I'll have more for that next, more about that next one.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Herman? Okay, Superintendent's Report, Mrs. Kroom.
The only thing I want to report is just an update on the email we forwarded to you a couple of weeks ago about the audit that we received notice we had to have, oh, it was like a thousand pages of paper to them in a week. Jen and I called the auditor that next day, we got the real, it was cute, she said, oh, ignore that letter. Okay, so, this was just about a week and a half ago. We did get them what they needed, they came today, they started today. They will be with us over the next couple of weeks. It's a performance audit, so they're looking at a number of things, but they start with the audit that occurred in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, there were findings in the child accounting realm of the district, a number of findings and a number of suggestions. So, I'll be working with Brad Perkins. The first thing we have to do is prove to them that we did react to that audit, and we did. So, we will prove all of that, but so far, so good, they're willing to work with us, but it is going to be over the next couple of weeks that the auditors are in and out. So, I just kind of wanted to give you that heads up.
Any questions for Mrs. Kroom? And I cannot let tonight get away without wishing you a happy birthday for our fearless leader here, so happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. You gave me the best present, the budget pass. Thank you. Yay.
That is probably the most expensive.
So we will prove all of that. But so far, so good. They're willing to work with us, but it is going to be over the next couple weeks that the auditors are in and out. So I just kind of wanted to give you that heads up.
Any questions for Mrs. Kroom? And I cannot let tonight get away without wishing you a happy birthday for our fearless leader here. So happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. You gave me the best present, the budget pass. Thank you.
That is probably the most expensive present you're ever getting from anybody, too.
It probably is. That's awesome.
Do we have any other comments or observations from our board members tonight?
Yes, I overlooked two comments that was also mentioned at the meeting about the way it looks the wage, the tax, raising the wages won't happen this year, and the gas tax won't pass either. Other thing on the comprehensive planning at the meeting last week, we discussed, a couple of us were talking that are involved with the township, and I being involved with the school, that the biggest thing we need to do is we've got to have a lot more communicate, yeah, communications between the school district and the township to work to better, working together to make things better for the township and try and improve. A big thing that's been coming out is we need more fields. That's one of the biggest things that's being pushed on the comprehensive plan, that there's not enough places around for groups that want to participate or play in sports or give kids something to do to stay out of trouble. That's it.
I wanted to take a few minutes, if I might, and share, share some thoughts. Jen, if you have a chance to pull that picture up. We're getting to that time of the year where, you know, we're preparing for graduation. In a couple of weeks, we're going to be having our own graduation here. And I know we've talked about this as a board, but we wonder sometimes what happens to our kids once they graduate. Where do they go? What do they do? What kind of things do they participate in? And, and I know it's something that it would be wonderful if we would have a way to kind of inspire the kids of today to see what's happening within the kids of, of yesterday. And I had a chance to participate and attend college graduation a couple weeks ago, and I've kind of been saving up. I've been kind of hinting at this because I thought it was a pretty neat accomplishment to happen. And didn't know if it would happen six years ago, once these kids sat in a row all wanting to pursue the same degree. And I thought to myself, wow, this, wouldn't this be a really neat thing if they actually pulled this off? And so I wanted to share a little bit about that because although I could really get caught up in personal pride tonight, this is about district pride. And, and I think we as a district need to know when our kids do some really neat and special things, you know. And we're, we're talking high school here, we're talking, you know, grade school, we're talking at the high school level. We're thinking graduation, get them to that point. We think about that. But I know, Chuck, you just experienced that with your daughter, you know, when you get to, to see them graduate from college and you get to see what, what, how they've been prepared at the high school level to do something great at the college level, you know, it, it does really inspire you. So I wanted to take a minute, if you'll indulge me for a minute, to share a story about these four graduates. Three of the graduates, Ross Strawball is on the left, Courtney Wilt is next to her, Sarah's sister, Erin Wetzel next to her, and my son Kyle Cook is, is next to her on the end. Three of them were 2013 graduates of Dover. Erin was a 2012 graduate. But the three of them all decided to pursue a doctorate at Lebanon Valley College, Doctor Physical Therapy. That program is a very stringent program. It's tough to get into it. They took only 75 applicants that year, and they were all told that the, the average rate of completion of this six-year stringent rapid accelerated program is about 50%, if you're lucky. So I can remember back in 2013, in August, seeing the three of them sitting together at orientation, and I thought to myself, wow, would this be really cool if three graduates, all from the same high school, actually made it to the end of their, their college education as doctors? And I'm here to say that happened. And not only that, but Erin, who graduated a year before them, represented fourth doctor graduating on that May afternoon at Lebanon Valley College, all with their doctorates of physical therapy. And I'm, I'm, I don't know if that's ever happened before, but I don't know if many schools could boast something like that. And that's the kind of thing that, you know, I'll, I'll share, I'll share how, how their, their story ended up. Seventy-five enrolled, that class ended with 32 actually graduating. So a little bit more than 50% did not make it that far. But within that 32, four of them were Dover graduates. So I know Kyle's one professor said to him, I need to go see this Dover school because I don't know what, what they're doing that's turning out these high, highly qualified interests and, and highly qualified students like this. And the program was tough. The program was very tough, but they all made it through. And, and it's a pretty neat success story. So I wanted to share that with you. As we look at a building project and we look at, you know, what happens to our kids, wouldn't it be neat if there was a way to showcase these kind of, of success stories? Not, not just because they're college-educated kids that graduate with a great degree as a doctor, but maybe there's other things that we don't know as a board, we don't know as, as faculty, you know, where these kids go? What do they do? What, what are they doing? So it'd be neat if we'd have a way to showcase a wall of fame or whatever. And, and the other thing that I wanted to mention to all of us and to our staff in particular is you have a great ability to influence the path of the students that you're in charge of and trusted with. I can, I can't speak for the three of them, but I can tell you from my son's perspective that he had an anatomy class with Mrs. Miller at the high school, and I can still remember him coming home and saying, Dad, I think this is what I want to do, because that class is, is inspiring me. I really want to know more about the muscles. I want to know more about the body. That, that really has got me intrigued. And that's, that was the catalyst to head him down that pathway. And so my word of encouragement to, to staff members is to teachers, don't ever underestimate the ability that you have to influence somebody's pathway. You may not even know you're doing it, but you may have a love for numbers, and all of a sudden, you've got an accountant. Or you may be a, you know, a good coach, and all of a sudden, you've got a great athlete who's taken it to the next level. Or you may be a great teacher and love teaching, and all of a sudden, you've got kids that are graduating as teachers underneath you. That happens a lot here. So don't ever underestimate it because in this case, it was very influential in, you know, what happens six years down the road. So this is a success story, six years in the making, and I'm sure there's more of them out there that we don't know. But I just felt like I had to share that because it's, it's a district pride thing. Four Dover graduates, and in that, in that day, there was other Dover graduates that also graduated with other degrees. So there was a lot of success there even beyond these four. But Dover, four Dover doctors in one graduation, I think is a pretty neat accomplishment. So thank you. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. And please pass our congratulations on to Dr. Cook. Thank you. Anybody else?
I want to take a few minutes to thank Jen and everybody else for their tireless, and I'm sure what's oftentimes a thankless job of going through the budget. You guys amaze me every year, especially given my disdain for budgets and numbers. I don't know how you do it. But know that we really appreciate all of your work and efforts that go into it, and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, on that same note, I would like to thank Mrs. Jen Lebo. She's done an amazing job here as my Assistant Business Manager in helping me navigate through Skyward. Also, all the administrators who were able to input their own budgets into Skyward this year and really work very closely with us again. Thank you for all of your hard work, and your staff, of course, the secretaries and everybody that helped out. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to, on the celebration side, Wednesday, we had the senior awards banquet. And again, just an amazing opportunity to see what our students have accomplished throughout the year. And Mr. Wallster, correct me if I'm wrong, over $130,000 in scholarship money was handed out to our students. It just, to me, it's unbelievable. So again, I agree with you. We got, we got a great group of, of students who are led by a great group of, of faculty. So, so just again, congratulations to all those, those students from last Wednesday.
I do have one more thing. Sorry. This is on the sports side. Being a parent of a child in the Dover Soccer, DASSA, Dover Aries Soccer Association, we had a number of teams in the York Cup who finished first this year. So I want to give a shout out to Matt Spar and his great job that he does with that program. My son's team unfortunately had a little mismatch. I, the team that beat us should not have been in our division, but that's all I'm going to say about that. We still were division champs in the actual, the, in our actual division for the, the regular season. We were undefeated. So that says a lot to the program, and I encourage anybody who's interested, tryouts are this week. So I encourage anybody to check it out. It's a great program. And thank you to Matt Spar for, for helping and to make that possible. And I think Renee's involved in that as well, too. So thank the Spars very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our last public comment period for items on or off of the agenda. This is a two-minute period. If you have anything to comment on, please come to the microphones.
We have a public comment.
Okay.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Tracy. Happy birthday to you.
Somewhere right now, some of our music teachers are really cringing. You can go right to the microphones, so. If you could state your names and addresses for the record then, please.
Christine McKee, 102 Cedar Drive.
Hold on one second, please.
Catherine Lynch, 205 Maplewood Drive.
I'm sorry, was that 205?
Yes.
Chelsea Newcomer, 2150 Skytop Trail. So we come as a group.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
It's recording.
It's recorded.
So we came as a group of parents who are actually more that could not be here. Our concern is about class sizes. We know that you guys just passed it for getting rid of some teachers for the next school year for Dover Elementary. We understand the reason why, but our concerns are, you know, every student, every day, whatever it takes. We don't feel that our children should be in class sizes of 28-plus that Mrs. Rappensberger had last year in kindergarten. If there was a need for a first grade teacher, there's still a need for these teachers. So we get that you want to have a little bit more, you know, we pulled up the policy for the maximum number of students. We understand that. But how is it fair to these kids if they don't get the one-on-one time that they need? If you talk to the children, they want smaller class sizes. I think that their opinions should matter. You know, you're talking about your son graduating. I work with a physician who graduated from Crawtown. She is upset that that school closed. She said, in a smaller class, she graduated with physicians, pharmacists, and lawyers. You know, smaller class sizes, you're going to get a better education. That's where us as parents are coming from.
And I actually have children that are being affected by the first grade cut and the third grade cut. And the last, with looking at your numbers quickly that were up there, the numbers that I had gotten, the current third grade class had 80 students or 81 students compared to the fourth grade class, right now that has 64. That's a huge difference. And you're going to cut them all down to three classes? And the one third grade teacher specifically has told me there's multiple behavioral issues, as well as in first grade, which I myself has, have seen. And I'm just concerned. Maybe we wouldn't need as many officers in the schools if we addressed it in elementary school. That's just my concern. Like I said, like Chelsea said, we understand that the, it's already passed. A lot of us were not aware that this was going to be taking place until less than a month ago. Let it be busy sports activities, naive, whatever that may be. It's our own stupidity for not paying attention, I guess. But I would really hope that they consider that at least for next year. And I know that the other schools are at the same situation. I just feel, I have two kids that are being affected by this. I mean, thank goodness, they don't need the support with their grades, but I know that there are students that do. So I just hope that that is taken into account because I, without getting anybody in trouble, I have spoken to teachers who do believe that they need that teacher, not just for somebody's job, but for the students that are being affected. So.
You talked a lot about the mental health of Dover is higher than the state average. Putting more kids in a class size isn't going to help that. We need to get our kids, when they're young, at the developmental age. K3 is where that developmental age is very important. If we can get some of those, the smaller class size, getting those kids the help they need at that young age, maybe we wouldn't see those high numbers later. It's really important that our kids have the, the people, the services that they need in these classrooms. My son was in a classroom last year with 28 kids.
In kindergarten.
In kindergarten. That is insane. That is way too many kindergarteners in a classroom. I myself am a teacher, and I know what it's like to have that many students in a classroom. You cannot meet all of their needs. It's impossible. You do everything you can to get every one of them what they need. And unfortunately, the kids who need it the most are the ones who get it, which is great. But what about those kids that are just slipping through? I have a kindergartner this year. I, I, I know how these work, and I'm concerned that my, my son going into second grade is going to be in a class of 28 students again. That's a lot of students for one teacher to, to manage and to help and support. So we're concerned about our students. And as Ms. Newcomer mentioned, you know, the motto is every student, every day, whatever it takes. What it takes is for our kids to have smaller class sizes so that they can learn to the best of their abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, future meeting announcements. We do have our committee meetings beginning at 6:00 this Thursday, and then we have our regular board meeting on June 18th, and that will be the only meeting in June. There are no committee or planning meetings in June. So at this time, if there's no other business, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, yes? Yes, opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.